I call our meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for March 21st, 2018. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience, while the Planning Commission is in session and all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. Could we have roll call, please?
Chair Merk.
Here.
Vice Chair Kowalski.
Here.
Mr. Nolan.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Commissioner Jagiel is absent, and we have one vacancy.
Thank you. Commissioner Nolan, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Thank you. The first item of business is public communications. Public communications is time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda under state law. Other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. Is there anyone that would like to speak? We will move on to the consent items. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the governing bodies and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. There will be no discussion of these items unless before the governing body votes on the motion to adopt. Specific items are removed from the consent calendar for separate motions. First item is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for February 21st, 2018. Do we have a motion to approve or disapprove?
I will.
Yes?
I make a motion that we adopt the Ojai Planning Commission meeting minutes from February 21st, 2018.
Alright.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Nolan?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Merk.
Abstein?
Powers.
Oh, that's right. Yes. Second item is the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting for March 7th, 2018. Do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion we adopt the minutes of the planning meeting from March 7th, 2018.
Alright. Do we have a second?
Second that.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Nolan?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Okay. Having gotten all the housekeeping out of the way, we now move to our discussion item, which is water-wise development standards. Could we hear from staff on this, please? And I guess we should welcome our new Planning Director, Mr. Connolly. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you. I'm glad I'm here. And if the weather keeps up the way it was going, I might be here for a while. I had a feeling. But yeah, I am happy to be before the commission this evening. I've had two city council meetings and a building appeals board last week, so kind of got everything. From being here last Monday, I've been able to make a lot of the meetings already, so -- which has actually been good. On the issue before you tonight, on the water-wise discussion, I know my name is on the staff report, I will admit that I contributed pretty much nothing to this, other than I've read it. So I don't know that I have any additional. I thought it was a fairly self-explanatory report where it looks like this has come before you before, there's been discussion. You already have many potential options laid out before you, so it looks like from here we're trying to narrow down what those options are, maybe prioritize them. And I also saw in the report, too, there's some discussion about where there may be cost implications for certain options, less so for others. But in any event, you know, I thought the report was pretty self-explanatory and be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Do we have any questions for staff? Alright, this is a public hearing, and we would like to get public comment. And I have a card here from Michael Haley.
Who else? Good evening, Planning Commission. I, too, would like to welcome Luke to Ojai. We're glad to see you, we're glad you're here, and I'm looking forward to working with you. I'm sure most of the community is, too. Okay, just a few comments on this write-up. I thought it was a very good write-up. When I read it, I thought, why not do all of it? Well, I'm sure there's some reasons not to do some of it, but basically, it all looks like good stuff to me, and if there's a way to do all of it, I think that we should. And I wanted to mention, too, that Casitas is giving a hundred dollar rebate on the toilets, but if we could add to that, I don't know how much they cost. I was thinking about looking into it myself, because I just moved into a new house. Oh, I'm at 407 Tico Road in Ojai, by the way, I forgot to mention that. And I'm not sure how old they are, but I suspect I could get better. So, one thing is that, to me, it seems like we should have a moratorium on new development. If we're at a stage-three drought and we're building more water-using developments, I think we really have to think about that. I think the public is very concerned about that. You know, you always see comments like, why in the world are we building 600 new apartments? Well, we can't control that in Ojai, obviously, but when you're this far down in water and you're doing building, it doesn't really -- it doesn't seem to make sense. My second comment is that one of the difficulties in getting anything done around here is that the government's bureaucratic, and governments are bureaucratic everywhere, but adding the building -- I don't understand why the Building Appeals Board -- appeals is involved in this at all. To me, it doesn't make any sense. I went back and I checked, I'm from Napa, I just moved down from Napa a couple of years ago, checked what they do, and their Building Appeals Board, they don't even meet on a regular -- they only meet when there's a need for an appeal. They don't write code, they don't go out and enforce law, and to me, it just seems like a conflict. How many parties to this do we have to have? It's the same problem that we have with Casitas water. You know, you bring more players into a situation, and it just gets to the point where you have paralysis on so many things. And we've had paralysis on water issues, and part of the reason is there's so many different players involved that it's difficult to get everybody to agree on anything. So ultimately, what ends up happening is nothing. Nothing gets done. So we have to really try to watch out for that. Let's see, 37 seconds. Another thing is that enforcement's always an issue here. And I was looking at, for instance, if you make a trade, what was the phrase? Offsets. If you give an offset to someone to build two new bedrooms on their house, and you say, well, the offset is, you're going to give up your lawn, you're going to reach a net-zero water, is somebody going to go check two years later to make sure they didn't put a lawn in later? Because I think that's the kind of thing that people will do. So that's just an example of what would bring up, you know, an enforcement issue. And we have a lot of enforcement issues here. So I see I'm out of time. I have one more point. Would the Chair pleasure me to finish? Okay, I'll be quick. Oh, no, I guess I got through it. The other thing is that, basically, though, I think it looks like a really good plan, and I think there's a lot of good ideas here, and I'm looking forward to seeing you all implement it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Oh, while you could. Mr. Haley, could you come back up there?
Sure.
Commissioner Powers has a question for you.
Okay.
This is interactive.
(laughing) I'm not used to that.
In what you were discussing regarding the Babs and so many parties involved, so what I'd like to hear from you, if you've thought it through, is what are alternatives? What do other cities do? Have you looked into that?
Yeah, I do. As a matter of fact, one of my best friends is a --
Streamline.
Yeah. Well, one of my best friends is a county supervisor at Yolo County, he was the mayor of Woodland, and he's a political consultant. He worked in Sacramento, and I asked him about it, and he said he's never seen a city that has a Buildings Appeals Board that does more than building appeals. That's what they're supposed to do, is appeal when there's a conflict and somebody doesn't like a decision that's been rendered by the Planning Commission and the Planning Department. I mean, maybe Luke, he's come from other places, too, he may have some input on this, but it's unusual. I've never seen or heard of a Buildings Appeal Board that had this kind of power. Another friend of mine that you know, Doug LeVar, he represented the property with the old bowling alley on it, and I guess they -- the Building Appeals Board just came directly after them, you know, without any prompting. Mostly, Appeals Board never -- they never do things like that, in my experience and from what I've heard talking from other people. So you're talking about the Building -- the Planning Department, anywhere else I've been, they propose code, you know, they hear the public, they give it to the city council. When there's an appeal, like for Napa County, the way that they handle Buildings Appeals is first, there's an internal process where the developer would go to the -- somebody designated inside the Planning Department, usually it's either the Chair or the Planning Department typically, or there's a Planning Director. We're so small, we don't have all that, but they could appoint someone to hear the appeal, and then if they don't like the result of that, they go to the county supervisors. Or in this case, it would be to go to the city council. You have elected officials saying no to you. See, here we have unelected volunteers saying no to people about building construct -- I don't think that happens anywhere else. So I was very surprised to see that. But obviously, I haven't researched the whole state, I don't know what the unintended consequences of changing that would be, there was some reason that Ojai has gotten to this point with that, maybe it's filling some functions that's important that I'm not aware of, so -- but I just was surprised to see that. Is that responsive? Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Mr. Kowalski also has a question.
Thank you. As a former member of the Building Appeals Board before I came on to the Planning Commission, I wanted to clear up some misunderstandings. By state law, each city is supposed to have a Building Appeals Board. What the form is and whether that duty is shared as a part of an overall set of duties by some other body is kind of left to all the cities to decide on their own.
Right.
Okay. And the specific duty that the Building Appeals Board has, and I'll come back to it in a moment, because ours is a little bit misnamed, is to handle appeals of decisions by the city building official. Okay? When I was on the Building Appeals Board, and so far as I know, ever since, there's only been one appeal so far, that was by the owners of the bowling alley. And in that, that is deciding appeals of decisions by the city building official, the Building Appeals Board has the power to say yes or no, and that decision, that narrow decision on an appeal, is not reviewable by the city council. That's black-and-white state law.
Okay.
The Ojai Building Appeals Board, if you go back and find the ordinance, go look it up, and there's a list of ordinances and city council resolutions that you can find on the city website. The body in this city that is called the Building Appeals Board is also the Housing Board and the Housing Appeals Board, and I think there's one other name, and each of those things comes with a set of duties and responsibilities. All of those were assigned to this body called the Building Appeals Board here in town by the city council at the time.
Right.
In passing an ordinance. In all those other decisions, those decisions by the Building Appeals Board, if they are ever made, are reviewable by the city council, just like everything that we do here.
Sure.
Okay. So that's how the structure works here.
Okay.
As far as the bowling alley, the Building Appeals Board not only did not go after Mr. -- what'd you say his name was?
Doug LeVar.
Doug LeVar.
Well, he was just representing the owners. I don't know who the owners of the building were.
The city building official at the time cited the bowling alley property and its owners for a number of alleged violations.
Okay.
And eventually, that appeal came to the Building Appeals Board, and the appeal was upheld. But it did not get to the Building Appeals Board until actually it took a certicus route through the Planning Commission because of a typo in the city ordinance. But in fact, the Building Appeals Board did not see any of that until months after the citations were levied by the city building official of the time.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright, yeah, I appreciate your straightening that out, because I wouldn't want to give that misimpression.
No, we don't want to have any more conflict here in the city. We have plenty as it is.
Right.
And if there are misunderstandings that lead to conflict, we should straighten them out.
Right. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Thanks for your input. I guess our public hearing is still open, is there -- would you like to talk it on there?
I'm going to talk -- I wanted to talk about the water-wise issues.
Yeah, that's where we're -- that's where we are now. Yeah. So come on up.
We don't fool around.
You guys really hit it today.
Yeah.
I was -- I'm sorry, I was out weeding, pulling up grass.
It's a great time to do that.
Yeah. My fingernails are dirty, I just came in, just saw the notice that you were discussing this, so.
Can you --
Oh, I'm sorry. This is -- I'm Renee Roth. Hello, Planning Commission members. I just wanted to -- I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to read the new report, I just started briefly going over it. Welcome to our new Community Development Director, as well. Glad you're here. And I think you're hitting on some of the really good points. This is a good way to address it. Some of the things that I think -- I just wanted to give you an update. The Green Coalition has putting -- been putting together some resource pages on water-wise landscaping, and they're getting ready to transition over to a new website, and those graywater, rainwater harvesting, sustainable landscaping, water-wise landscaping issues are all going to be -- I've drafted them, I'm not sure which ones the Green Coalition is going to adopt, but you're welcome to look at it. It's on my website, it's on my website, Rainscape Designs, and it's under Save Our Water Ojai, and there's about six things under there. And we talk about irrigation, and native plants, and M-WeLo, and you know, the whole landscape ordinance stuff. But I just wanted to say, regarding graywater, the city already has graywater standards that they attach themselves to for the county. The county has standards, and that's also on my website. There's a graywater page that has all the links to what the county standards are for graywater. It has the City of Ojai's emblem on the page, on the front page of the permit guidelines. So the City of Ojai has adopted the graywater standards of the county. They're just not very good, to be really blunt. And I sent today, Suzha Francina, a list of what the County of Santa Barbara is doing. The County of Santa Barbara has graywater and rainwater harvesting standards, and pages, and books, and diagrams, and our county still really thinks of graywater as wastewater that we need to dispose of and get rid of, instead of using it as a resource in the drought. So I just wanted to say, there's lots of things that we can do. For example, Casitas already has a Stop the Leak program. Casitas already has a -- am I running out of time? Oh, good, I'm not. The Casitas also has Cinnamon McIntosh, who goes out and does site evaluations for people. And she goes out and she says, let's look at your meter, let's look for leaks. All they have to do, people have to do, is call her.
Downspouts.
And downspouts, and rain gutters, yeah, rain gutters to downspouts to rain gardens, all of that stuff is what I put on those websites. So there's six pages. The other thing I wanted to say is just in terms of net zero and building code standards for net zero. City of Santa Monica, I've been watching what they're doing, and they're doing an incredible job with net zero. They started back in 2015, and they had UCLA and all the experts come in and do a net-zero water symposium, and they had people from UCLA and all the biggest and the brightest, and they have really good standards for net zero. There's also people who are, like the county, just approved the project in Miners Oaks. You know about the Miners Oaks project, right? Okay, so I'm just -- there's a lot -- there's a whole host of options that I know in the past, we haven't really had the push to get it over the goal line, but I feel like we can do it now, and I'm very optimistic, and I'd love to support or help you any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Ms. Roth? Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to the -- as a private citizen, sure.
Wait, she didn't turn in a card, come on.
Suzha Francina, private citizen. I like that.
Bend that mic all the way down.
Okay. Alright. Alright, I received a letter from an Ojai resident who's moving to Portland, Oregon, and she's half -- she's a little bit -- part of the time here is still going back and forth, and here's what she wrote. "Moving to Portland has been an eye-opening already. For example, when we were going through the paperwork of buying our new home, getting utilities, et cetera, we learned that if we have water runoff from our property or we put our gutters into the sewer, like many places in Ojai do, including City Hall, we actually pay more on our utility bill. They were proactive to see that managing stormwater costs the city money, so they gave an incentive for the people to manage it themselves to slow sink on their land. They offer a free site visit to give you tips on how to do that safely on your property." And then there's a quote from the, I guess, from the City of Portland website. "The City of Portland created a separate stormwater utility fee in 1977 to help pay for the increasing cost of managing stormwater runoff. City Council approved the Clean River Rewards Stormwater Utility Discount Program in 2006 to reward ratepayers who manage stormwater on their property." And I can, if you're interested, I can send you the link to all this. "There are cities already doing things like this, so Ojai does not have to recreate the wheel. I am really disappointed to hear that our main focus is to get on state water. There is significant amount of water to be captured off rooftops with a half-inch rainy vent," and then she says, "with a half-inch rainy vent, I could capture between 300 to 400 gallons off my rooftop in a single rainy vent. We are going to need more than a couple of 55-gallon barrels at our gutters to have rain captured as thoughtfully designed." And then she lists other cities, there are so many models out there, and then she goes on to, you know, all the complaints she has, because she said we can do laundry complaints, not complaints, but issues she had, well, I guess they are complaints, living here in Ojai, and she said, "You can do laundry to landscape without a permit, but anything more than that, there are endless hoops to go through." And she just feels that, you know, Ojai could do much more, obviously. Thank you, and I support what she says, and I hope that you, as a Planning Commission, move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzha. Yeah, Portland does have a number of really interesting stormwater catchment things that you can see around the city.
And the water purveyor is the city, I believe.
Uh-huh.
Which means if there's going to be an incentive to conserve water on your property, you really need to talk to the water purveyor to get something on their bills, because the city obviously doesn't send monthly bills to people on their water. We could encourage Casitas to do that, but I think that's the path to go.
Great. Well, Bobby, we're into the discussion phase now. Yeah?
Yeah, I agree with that. There's nothing wrong with any of these things that we've written, but I feel like this is the way we address every problem. We come up with like minutia little things that we agonize over, and we have 17 meetings, and then they get discussed, and city council changes their mind, and nothing ever really happens. I mean, to say that a restaurant can't serve water unless somebody asks for it, like, that's lame. I mean, we don't even really have to say that. If -- you have to go to the big picture, and the big picture is that our water purveyor, Casitas, is problematic, and that's where we have to start. That's important, because, yes, we do need state water, and we need to capture rainwater, and we need to do every single thing. And there are other places that do it so much better than we do, and yes, we should look at how San Diego solved their problem. The first thing, this was probably two years ago, we had a big water meeting at Michael Shapiro's house. Were you there?
No, I went to some of the --
Okay. And Tom Ash was there, and he's a consultant, he's worked with San Diego County and solved their water problems. And the first thing that he talked about was the water company needs to do a little surveying on their users, so that each person gets an allotment of water, and it's not based on your 2013 usage of water and you get a certain percentage. It's based on how many people actually live in your house. And this woman who goes out and looks at your yard, yeah, she should go out and say, okay, this is what you have in landscape, we need to save your trees, you have lawn, you don't get anything for that, and this is how you get your water allotment. And if you go over your water allotment, then you get fined, a big fine, and that money goes towards something useful, not paying, you know, some guy Sally who earns a lot of money. It goes to infrastructure. And we need to talk about the sanitary district, who's still charging $17,000 for second units, which is illegal, and has been illegal even before the new ordinances. And talk about how they need to reuse our wastewater. And we need to address these in a big way, and not by coming up with many, many ordinances. When we talk about development projects, it's really important that we address this issue to city council, which is, we need a master plan for the City of Ojai. Five, 10, 15, and 20 years down the line, how do we want to develop this city? Do we want -- what do we want to attract here, and what do we have to do to do that? It's -- I mean, we always do this, like, one little problem at a time. City council has 43 priority issues for the year. Excuse me, they meet, what, once a month? That's 12 meetings.
Twice, but...
And the meetings go on forever, and we talk about things that really don't matter. Right now, we need a major master plan, and that's what we should be using our staff time for. We need a master plan for the City of Ojai. We have so many design guidelines, they're all nebulous, and we fight for, you know, weeks at a time on colors. If you want to come up with seven colors like this in Santa Barbara that are approved, great, done, finished, easy. We need a master plan, and we need water. And those are the two issues that city council should be dealing with right now. And that's...
Thank you.
What I have to say.
It's great to hear. Thank you. Commissioner Nolan?
Thank you. So I heard, hear what you're saying, and I know some of those things, there's probably something we can talk about, we can make suggestions, but some of it will be up to Casitas and the sanitary district, but I'm not disagreeing with what you said. But I will say that a couple weeks ago, Dan Bream, who's the president of the OBGMA at the moment, gave a presentation at city council, and he closed his presentation, it was just a verbal presentation, but by saying that conservation counts. And I think that's kind of the focus of what we're doing here.
Absolutely.
And I agree, you know, yes, we're probably going to have to get state water, but I think the conservation measures, even though I know some people say, wow, it's a drop of water, I think it all matters. And I guess this is maybe a little bit of a suggestion, I kind of focused on the landscape, and I came up with a bunch of things that it ties into some of the items that we have here, and I can share those, and I also, I didn't print everything out, I had a computer glitch today, but I have, like, the PDFs, and I wanted to thank Renee and Suzha, because I had some of the same items that you had mentioned in what I was going to present or share. And I guess my other suggestion would be, and I don't know if we want to handle it this way, do we want to just kind of go item by item through here? Or is that too laborious? But we might want to do it, and we might just say, you know, no, or Casitas is doing that, so, okay, that's handled. And then plug in where we think we can make a difference. And/or if it's okay, I could read out some of the items that I have.
So are those items different from what we have in our landscape ordinance already?
Yeah, basically, what I have is either, like, revising an ordinance or coming up with a new one and what have you, but it ties into, you know, what we've got here, because we do have landscape standards, we have the graywater... we have the gray water, and I have a couple of the things that I mentioned.
Okay. Well, let's hear from everybody else, then we can circle back.
All right. I'll wait. Thank you.
Commissioner Quilce, did you want to...
Yes, thank you. Yeah, without getting down into the weeds too much, I note that one of the recommendations here, besides receiving public comment, is providing direction to staff regarding implementing potential Waterwise Development Standards and Code amendments. And so, as we discuss these topics and give our advice to staff, then presumably they'll go back to City Council with a term sheet that says, "This is what we recommend. Do you want us to do all of these things and come up with an amendment to the municipal code or not?" Right?
Yep.
And so, some of these things, as you mentioned, are out of the city's control. They belong to CASIDAS, or they belong to the Fire Department, or who knows? And I think, to the extent that we can, we should be taking those things out of here. They should not be, they should not be overreaching, let's call it, overreaching amendments to our municipal code. And I have specific suggestions as we go.
Okay. Commissioner Powers, you want to add to this discussion at all?
I'd love to add to the discussion. Thank you. First of all, because I would be remiss to my own commitment not to say anything, I miss the glass bottles. Plastic bottles don't represent who I am, anyway. But I'm appreciative of the water, because I always drink it. So, that's all I have to say for that.
That's a water issue.
Yes. Yes. Sherry just said they use water to wash the glass bottles out after we leave.
Reusable ones, yeah.
So I get that. So I'm not sure which is the greatest impact there. Couple things that came up to me listening to my fellow commissioners. One, I want to acknowledge Bobby, just for her vigilance and velocity, because there's been, for me, some velocity missing from our leadership. And in velocity, I guess I speak of proactivity. What I request of the council, in terms of Waterwise, and here's why I really agree with Bobby, is a strategic plan. You know, there's some cities that have an overall strategic management plan. As far as I can tell, Ojai doesn't have one environmentally or economically like a strategic plan. Here's our direction. We know we're heading east. We're not sure of the details, but we're not swaying from going east. And we're going to be diligent about that. So I highly recommend to council to allocate staff hours, as Bobby said, to create a strategic plan that has specific lines of demarcation and milestones and a spreadsheet, and that it's projected out 10 years, and we start ASAP on that. Another thing I hear, as my ear is to the ground in our city, is that there's a lot of conversation, but they don't necessarily see a lead-by-example role coming from city government. So, for instance, on page 46, there's retrofitting, and it talks about, you know, homes and remodels and new buildings. And my suggestion, along with that, is here we are in City Hall, what needs to be retrofitted? You know, do swales need to be dug here? Does there need to be a pond? Can we capture water off the roofs here? What can we do in this whole area around City Hall that is a model to the rest of the city? And I understand some things are happening, and there's some movement. I don't know exactly the details, but, you know, here we are in a rainstorm, and where's the water going off the roof in this building we're sitting in? So I would love to see just the lead-by-example model in a really big way. And then this building becomes a model that the citizens can come to. You know, I know there was plans for a gray water demonstration garden, you know, in the community garden behind us, and that's part of City Hall. But is there gray water that can be plumbed into this building? So, you know, everything in this landscape standards and, you know, in this whole report, I'd like to see implemented here. And then have the vortex, the hub of all these new ordinances and decisions, start from City Hall, and then blossom outward to the residents and the rest of the city. The other thing I want to speak about, and Mr. Haley spoke a little bit about it, was a moratorium on building. I don't know if we need to go that far, but I certainly would love to see conditions put on every remodel and every building, new building, that requires net zero, that requires specific features that are Waterwise and water conservations, and the highest tech possible, and the most affordable way to do that. You know, creating swales and ponds and rainwater catchment isn't very expensive. Those are very affordable features to put in, versus putting, you know, a complete recycling filter into a building that, you know, all that water goes back into the toilets and whatnot, which, if someone has the money, those are great models, too. But I think there are easy and affordable features that can be put on, that can be conditioned, that I feel we need to look at.
Thank you. All right. I kind of favor Commissioner Corbin's approach, that what we really need is an overall kind of strategy or plan of some sort. And going into detail on all these little tiny pieces of things is really sort of missing the point. I think it'd be great to have some kind of direction. At the moment, we don't have that. Yeah, Kathleen?
So, just kind of tying everything together, it's interesting, because I had a discussion with a City Council member, it's been the last, maybe it was six weeks, and it was kind of all in the same direction. And I know, and this ties into what, to the commissioners I just mentioned, that a lot of communities have, like, a sustainability action plan or a strategic plan. And the sustainability plan, you know, basically is dealing with the ecology and the environment, and it ties in water and the built environment and other things. So, the response was that, well, we don't officially have one, but assume that we do. So, okay. That was the answer that I got back. So, I think where I'm coming from on this is, and I, you know, I hear, we're all saying, "Oh, there's a little this, and there's a little that." But what I'm proposing is to develop the document or documents that these things would fall under, so that we'd have, like, a comprehensive plan of how to do something, like, for instance, underwater, like, the first thing I said was adopt an LID or Low-Impact Development Policy and Manual. And then I also made a note, verify or coordinate with Public Works, because I believe Greg Grant is doing that. And just to address Ray's comment about the city here, the Green Coalition, and I'm sure Renee will, could respond to this, too, but they are actually going to be doing a project. It's actually just at the beginning stage, but to redo the demonstration garden, and it would hit things like, it has to still be defined, but it's going to be a sustainable demonstration garden. I'm going to leave it at that, because it hasn't been totally fleshed out. But it's about essentially, you know, capturing stormwater, gray water. A place where people can come and learn in the city would be this hub, and part of our park system here that would display that. But then going back to the LID thing, Low-Impact Development Policy and a manual, I put down, for example, the City of San Mateo has one of the best ones I've seen anywhere. I've reviewed a lot of them. And then I also conferred that with, looked at it with Greg Grant, our Public Works Director, and also the consulting civil engineer that the Public Works Department is, and we all agree that that's one of the best ones out there. So in other words, that's a template. But some of the things that I think, what we can do with a template like that, is then we can adapt it for local use. And one of the, some of the things I looked at was, okay, revise our existing parking lot requirements. So presently, we have, we're required to have one tree for every five spaces. I'm saying to increase it to four. Why? Because trees are part of green infrastructure that has to do with low impact development, and they're the least expensive way to do it. And then they have other contributions as well. But also to include soil-building guidelines in details in that low-impact development. Now, once again, the low-impact development is pretty much used for Public Works projects, but it could have the component that would be required for all new building, meaning, you know, commercial, institutional, or residential projects. Also, under that, this is something that people actually could do and get a permit. The City of Ventura has been doing this. They did offer, I think it was 20 no-cost permits, then I think it tapered off once they started charging for it. But that's something that we could encourage, that, say, homeowners could do. I also wanted to point out, if you go around the city, the Complete Streets project that's going on right now, all the planters that are going on, on the Bristol Topa, Topa-Topa Lane area, there's some downtown, there's some of them actually along the bike trail. Those are actually in the process, they're not done yet, but they're actually stormwater planters, if you will.
Planters in the curb extensions.
Right.
Yeah.
And whether, you know, some of them have, excuse me, depressions, you know, to capture water, some of them don't, but a planter, no matter what, whether it has a depression or not, is actually going to capture some stormwater, it's going to slow down the stormwater, it's going to filter the first flush. So that's going on. And then I also wanted to bring up that in Complete Streets, this year, we had our master plan adopted, and it's a living document, and we knew all along that we wanted to add supplements or addendums or appendices to that document. So we've come up with a list, and the one that I want to focus on is developing a Green Street appendix for Complete Streets. So once again, every time there's a project or the city's going to do something, you can refer to it. So it'll have things about permeable surfaces, stormwater capture, tree planting, soil building, et cetera. And that'll be like a Green Streets components, because Green Streets, I mean, if you look at the literature, a lot of people call Green Streets and Complete Streets, but it's a component of it. So, and along those lines, I need to ask you all, I guess I could do it right now, or maybe I should, I'll wait till we have our report. Or should I ask right now?
Go.
I don't want to be out of, you know, line here. But I just wanted to ask for approval from the Planning Commission, if they were, or if they are in agreement for the Complete Streets Subcommittee to move forward on working on a Green Street appendix for the master plan. I would like to bring it back to my overarching body of commissioners.
That probably should come later, but...
I know, that's what I was saying, should I say it now or later? But, okay. I'll say it again. Anyway, I don't want to, then I'll just do a couple more things here. So basically, I'm understanding what you're saying, and I wish the city would, did have this master plan, meaning for everything, especially in sustainability. But I know we do have some of these documents, and I know there's some other ones that we can adopt. So I wanted to do a quick mention about the Modified Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance. I sat in on the 2015 round, and I've sat in a little bit on this next round. I didn't do as much as I would have liked to. But I know that they're going to be coming up with an update in 2019, and I know that they're including more on stormwater capture, stormwater management, and also trees. So previously, they had a lot of recommendations and some "you shall" items, but I have a feeling that some of the recommendations are possibly going to be coming "you shall." And the state plan is that they're going to look at that ordinance every three years and update it as needed. I also wanted to point out that that ordinance, the MWELO ordinance, is going to become part of the 2020 Green Building Code for the State of California. So it'll get incorporated into that. And then I know on our list here, our staff report, they had the landscape standards. So the things that I see missing, well, I haven't looked for two months, so it may have been updated in the two months, but I'm not sure. Our existing standard does not comply with the MWELO. There's some discrepancies. They're minor, but they're there. It's also, some of it's a little outdated and could be revisited and brought up to date. When I say up to date, I mean, considering our drought conditions, climate change, and what have you, I think that it could be revised. And Ray, you already said this, and Renee may have already said this, but I think that on all submitted plans, it needs to, the applicant needs to demonstrate stormwater capture, whether it's through grading, civil grading, or the landscape grading, and show, you know, depressions, dimples, swales, rain gardens. It may even be cisterns and tanks, because what we're trying to do is create a precipitation shed to keep water in the local environment. And a vegetated area equals plants manage water and thus manage heat, so it's all tied together in the environment. And so when you re-vegetate, you're actually helping to manage the existing local water system. And then I think what we need to do is develop a required checklist for water conservation and require projects to meet a certain threshold. So, and that could be indoors and outdoors, where you have, you know, these are the things that you could include, whether it's, you know, well, some of these things are now in the Green Building Code, but just, let's just say, a cistern or a rain garden, or recirculating water or gray water plumbing in the house. But you had one, and there had to be a threshold where you had to meet a certain percent, but you could select the ones that you wanted to pick on it. I mean, ideally, I'd say do them all, but I'm sure it'll, you know, comes down to finances or, you know, cost. But I think that that should happen. And also in the landscape standards, I think there should be a required percentage of mature plant coverage, as compared to open, permeable, open space, because of what I observed and I've kind of witnessed and found in many of my projects or consulting, that people will take out a lawn, and then they'll just put gravel in. So now you've taken out the green matter, you've taken out the roots, and you've reduced your stormwater and your filtering ability and slowing the water down, and you're affecting the evapotranspiration rate. And I think in the standards, that we should actually supply soil-building details for new projects, because it's one thing to put them on the plans, and if they're not consistent, this is just my experience, that the contractors don't do it, even though you have them on the plans, and it's a construction document that's signed, and it's a binding contract, but they don't do it. And then what that does is it leads to minimizing stormwater capture, the filtration process. It also leads to weakened plant material, and especially trees in the urban environment. So I think that's something that could be added to that. And then as far as gray water goes, thanks Renee, because I was going to bring up, Santa Barbara just recently adopted a no-permit process for a simple gray water system. As Renee said, right now, the city has, we can do laundry to landscape, a simple one, and that's the one that doesn't include, it goes directly to the landscape, but it includes, like, your sinks, showers, and potentially your washing machine, too. Of course, not black water. And then, of course, the standard system is the one where you're actually collecting it all, you're holding it, you're filtering it, and you're pumping it. But this new Santa Barbara one is allowing that simple one, which I think is something we need to look at, and I think it's something we need to adopt. I also have some guidelines, and I'll make a list, and I could send this over and share them, because I didn't print them out, but I have, Renee, you probably, it's probably a lot of the same things, but the links to a lot of these different documents. I kind of said this already before about that. The other thing I think, and this ties in with water, and I know sometimes this sounds like, well, why are you bringing up the urban forest? But I mentioned this earlier, trees are the biggest major contributor to green infrastructure. And when I say green infrastructure, that's talking about how we handle stormwater. And so, and they're essential for capturing, helping to capture that first one inch of rain. and the filtration of it, because you want to keep that first one inch out of your sewer system. And the trees are vital for that. So I think we need to update our tree ordinance, um, once again, look at the invasive tree species list, and then provide planting details for all new, for trees on, um, all new construction. And I, the reason I say provide them is because we want it to be done correctly. And then also to, to continue to ensure goals for tree planting and maintenance. I also brought up the composting toilets again. Um, even though I know we had a presentation, and I know we've heard from the sanitary district, but from what I'm hearing from the sanitary district, they don't understand what a composting toilet is. They leave out the composting component, where you have a high nitrogen, and then you have carbon material, and then there's actually decomposition. Somehow, they left that out. But, um, I actually have, um, a sample ordinance, and there's one from Oregon that we can actually look at. Um, there's also a couple of, um, composting toilet units. There, there are those self-contained ones that are actually legal. And so I think that's something we should look at, too, and let people know about that. Back to education. On the city website, we could have on the page announcing local cap, classes, but then having links to other websites. So we might have the link, go to the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. And then they could pick up all the, the ones that you guys are doing, which are basically the same things I would say to have on this site. But why waste the effort, you know, let's work together as a team, I would say. And then as far as incentives, um, we could, you know, I know, uh, you know, Casitas is doing what they do, but within the city limits, there, you know, maybe, um, grant funding for like plumbing retrofits. I saw, I learned something interesting yesterday, that there are grants available for turf eration. It's like, why the heck would we want to do that, right? But the reason you do it is if, um, especially like schools and parks, or somebody that has a large lawn, um, you do the eration so that you increase the infiltration, water infiltration. And so something like that. Um, and then we may also want to look at a green incentive where maybe, maybe there's a permitting discount or there's an expediting. I know other cities have done this. If you come in and you have a green project, you know, maybe you go to the, the beginning of the line on the, um, your, um, review process and what have you. And then I, I, I know this is a little off, and I think it's on for one of our future topics, but it, it definitely ties in. It has to do with, uh, fire. I have a lot more on fire that I've been working on, and I'll wait till that comes back to us. But I do want to say that the fire really ties into the water. So that's why I'm saying it right now. Anyway, um, the number one thing is, and this does tie in with Casitas, but maybe it's just pressure from the city, like presently, we have that forty percent water capacity. We're not necessarily meeting the gallons per minute required at the hydrants. We're not necessarily meeting the pounds per square inch, the P S I, that you need to actually operate a fire hose. And we don't, in a lot of places, have a fire hydrant where we need one. I know there's kind of a standard spacing. So, um, I, this is something we might want to amend our municipal code. And in the landscape standards, when a new project comes in, we might say, okay, damn it, show us where the, the hydrant is on the plan, because you usually have to show all the utilities anyway. And then you may have to contact the water, um, purveyor and write down, uh, here's the P S I, here's the G P M, and that may be the clincher as to whether we approve a project or not. Or that they, the applicant has to request the water company put one in or help pay for one. I'm not sure what the exact solution is, but I think that it's worthy of looking at. And then in our landscape standards, we do not have fuel modifications required. We should. Fuel modification plans, um, defensible, showing like defensible space and what have you in a maintenance, uh, schedule. So that needs to be on it. I know that we have a, um, upcoming, um, the fire map is supposed to get reviewed and come out from Cal Fire, the new one. And I propose that we look at that and maybe further define. I know we can make it more strict, but not less than what Cal Fire puts out. And we may want to look at a very high fire, a high fire moderate, and low tiers. And then within those tiers, we have parameters. When you come in with your project, you look up your address, you find out where you're at. Or maybe it comes out, it comes from staff. I'm not sure how that's going to work. But you may or may not be able to do certain things with water and with planting and with trees and what have you. Um, also proposed, because this ties in with water, too, that we, um, adopt a firescape list. Or if, you know, resources aren't available, we reference, Santa Barbara's got a great one. The Ventura County Fire Department has a really good one. We also need to show, um, species that are not allowed in certain fire areas. And we also need to show the, list the invasive species not allowed. And invasive species that are not allowed, um, in the, uh, a certain distance of ri, uh, waterways and riparian areas. Because they actually pull water out of the aquifer, out of the, the soil, you know, the hydrology. And then, um, there are also fire hazards, too, when they dry out. So those are, uh, some of the things that I'm looking at.
Thank you.
Anyway, I will share the links in the papers.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Corbin.
Um, I, I just want to make sure that, that with all the things that we do, that we don't put burdensome, um, more, more burden on the homeowner, more financial burden on the homeowner, more complicated forms that need to be filled out for every building project. That, I just think that the state of California is mind-boggling to me. And I don't want to make Ojai worse, in the sense that, um, you know, I've, I've built in other parts of the country, and it's, what you have to do here is really burdensome. And I think the intentions are really good, and sometimes the way it's worked out is not really good. And anything that's simple, if other cities have done things that are simple and work and are good, that's great. And the other problem we have here is the fact that our water purveyor is not part of the city. And, and, and every, and the sanitary district, I mean, and, and everything becomes burdensome and expensive, burdensome and expensive. And, you know, we talk about why there's no affordable housing. Well, that's why. We talk about why people want to have tiny houses, because they want to get around the permitting process. And that's a whole nother issue I don't want to go into today, but that whole grant thing.
We're talking landscaping today.
I hope we don't get it, but that's another issue. I'm sorry. I don't think it's sustainable, and I don't think it's innovative, and I don't think it's appropriate. I, I just, again, it all goes back to having a vision of what we want the, the town to turn into and what we think is appropriate. And there's lots of open spaces in our town, in our tiny little town. And we really have to think about, how do we want to use that land? Both for the benefit of the town and financially. How are we going to support this town? So that we don't just put fees on every time somebody wants to build something or, you know, a big permit fee for replacing something that you already have, and you're putting a new one, but you're supposed to get a permit. And I, I just think that we really have to take a look at that. The town has to become more sustainable financially, and that's how we have to figure out our development. We have a seven-and-a-half acre parcel up where the school would like to find a developer for that. That's, that's the core of, of what, what Ojai will turn into, or not turn into. And there's some really big issues on the table that we really need to look at. And, and we need help, because I don't think that our staff at this point has the capability of doing that. I don't know about you, but, um, that's not who I mean. And I, I think that we need to look at everything. How is our city staffed? What is the role of everybody? When we hire, when we hire somebody to come in as a consultant, who, who are they? And there are lots of towns doing good things, lots of cities doing good things. It's important to address some of those, take a look at it. Portland, Oregon is amazing. And I think, you know, however, they've handled lots of things, and much bigger than we are. But there's, there's lessons to be learned from all of this. And it's frustrating to me, you know, I've been on this commission for, uh, a year and a half, actually. And I feel like every time we get an issue, it's, it's, somebody wants to put such-and-such on a parcel. Well, how does that fit into the big plan? It would be much easier for us to make a decision about it if we knew how it'd fit into our big plan.
I agree. I also, um, I'd like to echo some of your comments here. Um, I'd, I'd like the idea of taking all these things that Kathy's talking about and, and making them like a resource that's available to people.
Right.
But not necessarily saying, these are ordinances, and you have to do it this way. But I love the idea of the city being a resource for, um, all this stuff. I mean, this is where people, this is the first place people are going to look when they go to build something.
Well, we have, we have design guidelines, and we have other guidelines for various things in the city. And all of those, before they're actually used supposedly, uh, are going to be brought before the city council and approved or not. And I think that's the way we ought to go about it. There ought to be, we've got Waterwise Design Guidelines that, that mirror, I presume at the moment, the state law, the M W L O, and, and whatever else. And if we want to go beyond that, we can talk about changes to the code. But I think that a simple explanation of what all that stuff is could be a useful thing for the city to provide, if not on, if not only on the website, then perhaps at the desk as well, when people come in to do development. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in the middle of yours. As, in my past lives, as, as an executive with companies, large and small, I kind of appreciate where the city council is on all of this. If you stop and think about it, yes, all of us are volunteers. But I think that as volunteers, we have an obligation to spend time, potentially even a considerable amount of time outside of these meetings, researching the topics that, that we cover, not just the cases, but the topics. If you look at it, I don't know what the city council's getting paid these days, five hundred bucks a month or some number like that. Okay, by industry standards, we're talking less than ten hours a month these people are getting paid. So they're basically volunteers, too. And they don't have to just talk about what we do here or recommend that they do from here, but they have to worry about budgets. They have to worry about arts. They have to worry about every one of these other commissions. And the reason that they give us stuff to do is because there's more of us in all these commissions and boards and whatever than there are on the city council. And there's lots more hours available theoretically to go in and do deep dives on things like Waterwise that the people on the city council don't have the time to do, because they've got too many other duties. That's why they assign stuff to us. As far as a strategic plan, the city has a general plan. And it has, at least in theory, a, a process for amending the general plan. I griped about paying for maintenance of the general plan and not seeing any maintenance or updates or whatever when I got my remodeling permit. But that aside, the fact is, there is a statement of who we are, where we are today, and where we think we want to go in the future as a city, and that's called the general plan. And if we think that there are things that should be in the general plan, assuming that we've all read it, and, and that are not there, then we should be bringing those up. And the ones that apply to what the planning commission does, land use, zoning, and, and closely related issues, then, then we should take it upon ourselves as a commission to look into those things, recommend to staff that they put together a term sheet and send it on to the city council and say, do you or don't you want to do something in this area, this area, this area, this area? And I think that's kind of what we have here. And, and if we, if we have not individually and collectively read this and said, I agree with that, I disagree with that, and so on, then we're not in a position yet to do what was recommended, namely, provide direction to staff regarding implementing potential Waterwise development standards. And I think we need to do that. Individually, we could each take a paragraph. We could each take a major heading. You've got landscape standards covered from here till next Sunday. That's great. There's also gray water, retrofitting, alternative management strategies, recycled water, and two or three others, leak detection, offset programs. And where, where there are items in here that are not within the city's purview, we should knock those out. We can't recommend that staff recommend that city council do something. Just for example, on page five of six, under alternative management strategies, it says impose conditions on discretionary development projects. If it's a, if it's a development project that is outside the city limits, the city council could decide to recommend to the Ventura County Planning Commission that something be done. But the city council has no power to impose conditions. And so I think as much as, as I agree with you that we need to operate at times at a very high level and give people thematic guidance, we also have to get down in the weeds, because the city council, which is a small body, and the, and the city staff, which is another small body, don't have the time to do all of this. And I think it's incumbent on us to do it. I have some, some comments on details of this. But I think before we can give coherent and, and comprehensive guidance to city staff to go do something for city council's approval, we all need to look at this and decide what of it we like and what of it we don't like and why. So that's my say.
Let me make sure. Christopher Powers, do you have anything to add to this discussion?
I'm sitting here listening to all this, and it's a high-level, very intelligent, brilliant conversation, and I appreciate everyone's input. Bobby and I came on the planning commission at the same time, so, a year and a half ago. And, um, what I'm just struck with is how long it takes to do the simplest things. And there is a drought. And so when I hear, yeah, no, in two thousand and nineteen, something's going to, it's like, well, why does that take a year? I think that was a state thing. So, but.
Just updating, the two thousand and fifteen is already in place. You're going to update it.
Right. So there's a drought. There's a sense of urgency. How long does it take to dig a frickin' hole and capture water from the roof on City Hall? I'm just going to go back to my lead by example. It doesn't take two months of conversation to like pull the trigger on some really simple retrofitting. I'm really glad that the Green Coalition I've been hurting, hearing about for a long time is doing something with the community garden, because when I first moved here twenty years ago, it was kind of thriving over there, and then I saw it just dwindle away.
And it died, yeah.
But that's a little plot over there. So I, I don't want to beat a dead horse on this building and what happens in this plot of land as I'm looking out there at a pretty hedge, whether, I don't know whether it's, you know, drought tolerant or what, but... I don't know. It comes to a point where the time for talking is over, and there's very simple things. And that's why a strategic plan is needed, because you need specific timelines that, oh, this takes a month to do. This takes a week to do. This we can allocate, this number of staff hours in a year and a half, that's our go-for. Business, you know, a, a city is a business. What makes up a successful business? And, and you have a lot of experience. So, you know, what does the spreadsheet look like for the business economically, strategically, environmentally? You know, for the, each area of purview that the city council has, that we have, each commission has. But in this case with water, without a real strategic plan, I mean, we were on the sustain- But in this case with water, without a real strategic plan, I mean, we were, on the sustainability committee, we were looking at that sustainable roadmap, right? That, that was first created in two thousand eight, or seven, or something like that, and then it, like, everyone forgot about it, went away, then we were gonna redo it, and then we're not gonna redo it, and then... I'm speaking a little out of frustration, but I'm really speaking out of pragmatism of, of what can actually be done in a short term, midterm, and long term. And let's do it already, because some things are very simple. One other thing.
Okay. I just have my hand up.
Regarding incentives, and, and you, you mentioned this, because I was, I was gonna say it, in terms of... Yes, some of the incentives would need to come from casitas. But other incentives can come from the city in terms of permitting.
That's what I was referring to.
So I have a friend who's has beautiful gardens, rainwater barrels on two or three corners of the house. And I asked, "Why isn't there any gray water?" Well, it's so expensive to dig up the cement we have, because there's, there's walkways all over and driveways, and for them to run it where the water needs to go-
All those French drains, yeah.
Right? Well, if we could give people incentives, and, and, one, if they're doing a remodel, to add those features, and then discount the permit twenty percent or something, you know, maybe not... See, for me, no, I'm not a homeowner, but being put in front of the line, maybe that would make a difference. But I think I would rather have the money than to spend on the remodel versus put it in front of the line. But even someone who's not doing a remodel that just needs, in order to put in gray water, they have to dig out the French drain, the channel, and dig out cement. How can we help them do that? Because water is a commons, it's all of ours, we have all, each have our own little plot, but in, in essence, water is a common, so we're all in this together on that.
I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
And Steve, this kind of tied in with what you were saying. I'm just wondering if, you know, if we come back at our next meeting, if we can get that on the agenda, if it works. And we each, like, I'm willing, of course, I did the landscape, I can bring more, and I would do the, and I would be willing to do the gray water, because I've done a lot of homework, and I can do more. And maybe we all take one of these items, or, and some of them we're gonna just delete, because maybe we, you know, they just don't-
If you take two, I'll take two.
You'll take two.
I'll take retrofitting and alternative management strategies.
And the reason I'm saying this is because I'm, I'm listening and I'm hearing everyone. I s, I got on the planning commission in two thousand and ten, and I think I had my first or second meeting. Our planning director at the time said, "Oh, city council is going to give some assignments to the planning commission" because it was during the economic downturn. "We need to get these ordinances adopted. We're past due on some of them, and we don't have the, the money at the time." And that was the, actually, it was the complete streets, and it was the landscape standards with the modified water efficient landscape ordinance, and I believe it was the lighting, the dark sky lighting. And so, you know, they kind of looked at me, because my background's in landscape, and I was like, "Oh, okay." And so I started working on it in two thousand and ten, and instantly started get, doing some gathering of data and information on gray water. And I can't even count how many staff people, but we had a lot of turnovers, mind you. So I think it just kept getting lost. I mean, you know, I don't know how many interim directors we had to, and I went to all of them. I went and talked to, to, uh, two of our city attorneys, our, our handful of public works directors about the gray water, and they all kept saying, "Well, oh yeah," and then we'd get a new staff person. So I understand this thing about it takes a long time. So it's two thousand and eight, and I'm still talking about it, and I haven't stopped. So, and it's that thing where it takes, unfortunately, a long time, and I sometimes I found myself just kind of like going, "Then no, I'm gonna persevere," right? Because I think it's a good thing. So, I think we should take action. And the city council does give us assignments like this because we are their advisory board. And this is something they're interested, they've stated that, and they want us to work on it. So it's really up to us. I mean, we can, we can give them the input that we want to give them. If we see we want to create like a sustainability water plan or something, I mean, we can say that when we give our recommendation.
And at the same time, say what should be in it.
Exactly. And that's why, I know you brought some things, and that's why I brought some things. And whether or not, I don't, I'm not into over permitting, I'm, I'm a property owner myself, and I get it. But I think there's some things that need to be part of a design package, or part of permitting proj, uh, process because of where we are and what's going on here. One of them is the crucial, the water issue. I don't think that everything has to be on there, but I think there's some things that, it just makes sense that people should have to do it. We, we have to change our culture, change the way we think, because if we don't, yeah, maybe we get state water, but what if the state water runs out, and we're not doing all the things that we can do here that are part of that project? So I think, and that's something, you know, as, as a commission, we can, we can go through those lines. But if we get going and take action, and we just say, "Okay, let's, let's address what we've got here, we can add to it, or we can take from it," and start going through it, and then create the recommendation that we think is best for our community, and then take, pass it on to the city council. I hear everybody.
I like that idea.
I hear all, I, I understand, I get all of it, yeah, from all directions, but...
Yeah, we can't, in my opinion, we can't say at a high level, "We ought to do these things," and then let staff figure out what to do with that. That's part of our job. And there are a lot of things that have to do with water. You and I are both quite interested in, in fire suppression water issues, for example. That's not part of Waterwise Development, I don't think. It's, it's part of fire-
Well, there's crossover, and it's interesting because-
Public safety and things, but it's-
Yeah. You can't really, I mean, we can isolate things to a degree, but, you know, all of a sudden I brought in, like, the tree ordinance, you know?
Yeah.
Because there's things that greatly affect, are the bigger picture, like Bobby was referring to-
Right, right.
Of, like, what is, what are we all about here? What's the big picture? And I think we can pull from our general plan as to what that is, but we may want to make some recommendations, say, "You need, we think you should add this to the general plan, so that it's more comprehensive and addresses the soul sustainability, maybe even more." Because it does to a degree, but maybe even more so.
Um, I guess the other question I have is, you know, how do we interface better with our purveyors? With the sanitary district, with the casitas water board?
We, we, the planning commission, don't, obviously.
As the city.
The city council does that.
The city.
Yeah.
But I think that's an important question. I think we really need to have some sense of that, and how do we back the city council in doing that?
I think a, a good thing that we could pass along, outside of recommendations in Waterwise Development Standards, which is supposed to be our topic for tonight, we could say, "Oh, by the way, we also suggest that the city council take up the following topics with our water purveyor."
Exactly.
And, and that's, and that's a perfect thing for an advisory board like this to do. And I think that, that while I agree with you, we can't spend all of our time down in the weeds, if we're going to give recommendations to staff to put together something, it's got to be fairly detailed because they're not a position to just make it up from, from high-level statements. You know, A B C is good. Well, what does that mean, really? And then beyond that, the next level after city council says, "Yes, we agree A B C is good, and some of these things we want you to work on, staff." Then they get down to the details, you know, down to the sub-paragraph level in the municipal code. So a great deal of detail will be required in the end. And I don't believe it's, it's fair to expect that city staff is going to generate great detailed lists of things to do from high-level statements from advisory body. I think we have to give them more detailed guidance.
Isn't this, um... I think we should look at this as an opportunity.
Yeah.
I'm looking at our agenda, which is empty.
Right, and this is a chance for us, I mean, as commissioners, you know, we've been assigned this task, and it's kind of loose and all over the place. But we, I mean, we, we can create and make this recommendation, make it, you know, whatever we, we think is good.
Yeah.
So it's an opportunity.
None of us applied to be on the planning commission because we like to come to meetings. We all, I think, want to do something good for the city.
Exactly.
And this is a good thing to do for the city.
Right.
And something I'd like to mention
Yeah.
is that, you know, we don't exist in a bubble on this commission.
Sure.
And that council is getting a lot of input from, you know, expert residents in the city. Uh, you know, Connor's giving a lot of input, Connor Jones, Angelo's been-
Angelo's there every meeting, yeah.
Lot of input. Larry Yee's putting, you know, and, and the WAG is, you know, the, the water-
Advisory group, yeah.
Advisory gives, giving a lot. So, we're not existing in a bubble, there's a lot of, lot of input going to council, which is fantastic. And we do need to focus on these things, and it's hard to keep track of all the input council is getting. Some of it's going to be redundant, and some, some of it won't be. Certainly, council, councilmen Wyrick and Haney have been to so many water meetings and water boards and interfacing with casitas. It's quite remarkable, so... All the resources and information is there. It's how to make something intelligible and create the standards and the systems that will then be codified, you know, within the city from all of that input.
I think it's perfectly appropriate to ask staff to take inputs on any particular subject from a number of bodies like ours, and, and aggregate those so that there's no redundancy in what goes to city council. That, I think, is a fair thing to ask staff to do. But we can't ask them to make up all this stuff. We need to make up what we think is important and pass it along.
And really, our goal is, you know, we've got all the other water groups that are doing research and what have you out there. And our goal is to, to concentrate on what we can do as far as, you know, an ordinance, or if there's like a manual, or details, or something that-
Or a set of guidelines, yeah.
Set of guidelines. And that's where, that's where our work is.
I like that. So what can we do for our next meeting?
Well, what if we break, if we all, if we, I mean, like I said, I already started on those two, and I did a little, and some more on the other ones, but what if we break it down and take assignments and come back? And then share what we have, maybe we can kind of organize it, and then, you know, we go, we're gonna have to sift through it all too. But I think organizing to something like, is a good thing. For me, like, the landscape standards, there's already Article twelve. We already have adopted the Model Water Efficient Landscape Board, and it's, so I'm gonna be following under that. And then the gray water, you know, that probably will, I'm not sure if that's, well, I was told in the past that would, that would fall under the plumbing code. And I will say too, that I, I have talked with some people in, in the BABS, or the Building Appeals Board. And, and we even talked with city council about this, that some of the things that we have may be something that falls under the building code, but it's okay for us to put it in this document or into this recommendation. And they likewise might, may come up with an idea that has to do more with planning. But it's not about, it's really about us collaborating more, not that we're gonna go outside and meet with them at this moment.
Yeah.
But just so everyone knows that we're not trying to take it away from one commissioner or the other, it's more, it's this collaboration that I think is vital to having a really successful community, so...
I'm wondering if we could, I'm sort of envisioning a kind of workshop where we could
Right.
put together a, a document of some sort that we, that then becomes like the basis of this kind of master plan that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, and some of it, some of it, I think, would go directly from us to staff, to eventually get to city council. Other things like gray water, beyond saying retaining gray water on the parcel is a good thing, probably, that, which, which, which we could opine, pretty much anything else is gonna be a building standards kind of thing. So we can leave that recommendation for the BAB to flesh out.
Yeah, there's, and there's some crossover because it goes into the, you know, if it goes into the landscape. So that's why I think the two-
Right, oh, we should be, we should be collaborating.
Right.
Some of us and some of them.
Right, and even if we, you know, as we go, because John, I, I like what you're saying. Um, you know, once we put this document together, we can always put a notation next to something like, "Refer to BABS," or "We want them to review it," or, you know, so it gets flushed out or something.
Or, or-
Right.
Recommended action by city council, but not to go in the municipal code.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I haven't personally been to the BABS meeting yet. However, and, so I don't know, you know, what their temperature read is on, for instance, gray water, as a whole, as a body. See, we're, we're here, and we're, I can see their sensitivity towards ecological concerns and the drought. I don't know if BABS feels the same way about gray water. They may go, "Gray water."
Well, that's okay, we can make the recommendation.
Right.
Although I have talked to some of them, and they were open, but it's not a matter of if they're open. I think we put this document together, and I, I think we all know in the city, and outside of the city, we have a water problem. So right now, we're putting together, you know, everything that we think potentially the city could address, whether it's, you know, part of a code, or, or what have you, or a guideline. And then, you know, they can, they're gonna review it, the city council's gonna review it, and they're gonna prioritize. And we can prioritize it too in our document.
Yes.
Like, this is like a, a low-cost, no-brainer, but it's, you know, here's the impact. If we need to supply, you know, backup data or research, it's out there.
Well, I was being, I, I spoke what I did based on what, you know, what you were just saying about collaboration. So if we put, if we put effort and, and, and brilliance into a document that speaks about, you know, gray water, and I'll use that again. But then the BABS, and BABS doesn't want to collaborate that, or BABS doesn't agree, and, and actually does a counter, counter-recommendation.
That's why city council is paid to sort out disagreements like that.
Yeah, I get that. So I'm wanting to nurture the collaboration, and somehow, maybe the workshop includes members of the BABS, if that's legal.
Yeah, as long as we don't violate the Brown Act. And we had already asked, I think it was at, um, you might not have been there, because I think it was right after the fire, I believe, when we had our joint meeting, I think it was the beginning of January.
I wasn't there.
Joint meeting with the city council.
Yeah, and I, I think it was, I think it was there, I'd have to go back and look, don't quote me on this, but I think it was there that we discussed briefly that the BABS and planning commission, it was basically, we talked about fire and water. Those were the two top priorities, and that, you know, we could, as long as we didn't violate the Brown Act, we could definitely put our heads together. And I ha, we have done some already. I have done some with fire and even with the water stuff.
As long as we don't have a quorum of either body attending a meeting. So we could have three planning commissioners and two, two BAB members
Well, as long as it's-
could, could have a meeting, and it's not a Brown Act meeting.
Okay, but is a workshop considered a meeting?
We could, I think as long as we agendize it.
Oh yeah, as long as we agendize it and announce it and all of that, we could get all of both bodies together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We might, that's where we might want to go after we do our, our strategy.
Yeah.
There's a number of things on here, you know, that, um, when you do a building project, you were required to have a much more up-to-date water-saving devices than nineteen ninety-four.
Right, because of the, the upgraded green building code now.
Yeah.
If it's new development, you go with, with the new building code.
Right. Absolutely.
Yeah.
And so I'm not quite sure why.
Or like if somebody has an existing home, and let's say they want to add on or remodel a bathroom, and the house was built, you know, in nineteen eighty, well, that's when some of this will get triggered with the new bathroom. I did that at my, at my house.
You have to have what's up to code now.
Right, right.
Well, it depends. Favorite, favorite phrase of any lawyer.
Well, it's very-
My son is a lawyer, he says that a lot.
It's very hard to go to a plumbing supply store and buy something that's not code, and if, even if you buy something online, if you want it shipped to California, there are things they won't, they won't ship it if it doesn't meet our code.
Agreed.
They're not allowed to ship it.
Yeah. But you're not required at the- But you're not required at the moment to retrofit beyond the 1994 standards. And it takes no
For the rest of the
For anything that's in your house. I think the new state law says you're supposed to retrofit to 1994 standards in, for example, low-flow toilets. Or as we lovingly call them, the double-flush bottles. And it takes no triggering event for that requirement to apply. If we set up more stringent standards than what the state law says right now, I think then we have to, we have to specify some triggering event. Sale of a house, remodel. If it's new development, if you're building on a little corner of your house and putting a new bathroom in, that's new development. You've got to go with today's code.
Yeah, you can't get a building permit and you have to get a Title 24 report and then you won't.
All of that stuff.
Right.
But until this business with the 1994 toilets standards came out, you didn't have to change anything in your house. You could just leave it there until you sold it or, or you did a remodel or something like that. Now, you have to go to 1994 standards and there's lots of, I'm sure toilets and other fixtures in the town that are older than that that just haven't changed because they've been there all this time and they're working. But, so there's a whole mix of these requirements and we need to sort out what we can of it to give, to give guidelines to staff to move forward.
And unfortunately, some of these older toilets are much more reliable than the new ones.
Oh yeah.
Where you have to replace every single part on them within, you know, the first two years. So that's.
Nobody said newer is better except in theory.
Right.
So speaking of panels and workshops, I think it's a, it's appropriate time to mention the Ohi Chautauqua Panel on Water that's coming up. It's Part Two on April 15th at Matilah Junior High. And I'm certainly going. Tickets are free, thanks to private donations and the Ohi Valley Chamber of Commerce and Oak Grove School. So you go to ohichataqua dot, ohichat.
What time is it?
It is from three to five PM on Sunday, April 15th. And you just go to the ohichat, C-H-A-T dot org and, and like you're buying tickets, but you're not. They're free. It just reserves you a spot. Last time I went, it was sold out. So though, the entire two-hour discussion is gonna be about water. Richard Hodges, a member of the Ohi Valley Water Advisory Groups, the moderator. Tom Ash is on the panel, Water Conservation Expert and Horticulturalist. Mary Bergens on the panel, Board Member of the Casitas Municipal Water District. Dan Breen's on the panel, Board President of the Ohi Basin Groundwater Management Agency. Connor Jones is on the panel, Ohi Permaculture Founder. Bruce Kubler's on the panel, Board Member of the Ventura River Water District. Alex Kim's on the panel, Managing Director of the Ohi Valley Inn. And Bill Wyrick are Ohi City Council Members on the panel. So a lot of different viewpoints and expertise is being represented on that. So again, that's the Ohi Chautauqua Panel on Water, Part Two on April 15th at Matilah Junior High. That's at 703 El Paseo Road in Ohi and Sunday, April 15th, three to five PM.
They're gonna have a hard time fitting all those people in on that panel.
Yeah, in a short period.
Each person gets three minutes. Well, how can we move forward on this?
So, do we want to, um
Last, last time it was filled up.
They should get their tickets tonight.
Yeah, it's selling out very quickly. I did get tickets earlier today, but they're getting down there.
So do we want to divide up and, like I said, I'll, I'll do the landscape standards and the gray water. And Steve, you said you had a couple
I'll take retrofitting and alternative management strategies. So I think there's a bunch of that stuff that, that we can assign to other places besides the path through staff to city council.
All right. We've got recycled water.
Isn't it fair to ask our new staff member to, if he has some input in terms of things that are done in other communities that you know of, that you think were really good as reference points for us?
It's difficult. There's a, a lot that, you know, I'm sure there's a lot that's been done. This has not been an issue of my focus. I'm kind of coming in at this stage. The one thing I got out of your discussion though, at least three of the five, was being comprehensive and having some kind of a, a plan to work from. I know one other issue, being here a relatively short time, is the general plan badly needs to be updated in Ohi. Many of the elements are, I think, going back to the eighties. So I would focus, this issue can't drive the general plan update, but what I would say is what you do should feed that update because that's gonna happen too. So I think the work you're doing on this, you have required general plan elements like conservation and open space and you can add elective ones. And I think in this community, what I'm hearing too is water and water management are a really big issue. And maybe the work you're doing here, which, the, these issues sort of go all over the map. Some of these go to a building code, which is ministerial and it's pretty much a thou shalt do this. And some of them are much more policy-oriented, which lend themselves to going into a general plan. So obviously, the timeframe on this is to do something more quickly than a general plan update, which frankly, I heard discussion about time, that typically takes years in any city. But I would probably have on my mind, what you're saying is gonna feed into that and frame those future policies. So the other thing too, that I think is helpful as staff and while we don't have costs associated with all these, is if you can prioritize, what, what do you see, whether it's in here now or not in here, what do you see as the big issues for water-wise? So I agree with you. Everything sounds good. And some, like, you know, the example of, don't serve water in a restaurant unless somebody asks for it. Okay, well, that's common sense, but it's probably not accomplishing a heck of a lot.
And no cost to the restaurant.
Right. And it's not exactly new. But it is helpful for me to say, what, what are the things you'd like to see done?
First.
Yeah. What are, what are the keys? You'd like to do it all, but if I got these three things in order, that's helpful because that also shows up in the staff report to the city council. This was what the planning, planning commission thought were the priority items. So I would say focus more on that. And if you can focus more on things that aren't already, say, building code requirements, things that people already have to do, if you want to go beyond that, that's great too. But it's kind of like when I read environmental impact reports on greenhouse gas issues, it's a recently added section. Nearly everything is what the state law is requiring. So it's, you read through 20 pages and it doesn't really get you anything more than what people would have to do otherwise. Okay. By 20, 30 cars are gonna be more fuel efficient, so it'll have a, a positive impact on air quality. I guess I would try to look at what, again, what can the city control? What do you think are the priorities? Yeah, go ahead.
For me, just looking at this quickly, I would say that the, the biggest issue would be how to address new development.
How to?
How to address new development, you know, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, what do we require of them? Because obviously, we don't have enough water for what we have and we know that. But you can't say that a city has to stop growing or developing or changing because then you'll just wither. So we really, I think, have to look at that issue and talk about, I mean, as far as personal residential things, I think we can, there's a lot of recommendations we can make. But as far as maybe using staff time, how to address new development issue is, 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 to me, I think that's important.
Okay. I, I think I could co-sign on that one. Giving, given, you know, the concept reviews and design reviews that I've seen come before, some the last year and a half and I know I'm always saying, well, could you put in more, some more green, design things in there? You, you know a lot about that. Well, it's not what the client wants. And, and I feel like there's a, a lot of new projects that have been coming to us over the last year and a half. Then I'm going, gosh, you know, I wish something were in place. So when I make a suggestion, it's more than a suggestion, it's a condition.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be nice if we had some leverage on things. I know a lot of people say, how can you approve a brewery when we've got a drought? And the answer is, we don't have any way to disapprove a brewery because we don't, we don't have anything that says, oh, you can't build that because it's gonna use a bunch of water. But if we had something that said, every new project has to be net zero in terms of water, then we'd have something that we could, we could point to and say,
Yeah, maybe they are worried that they'll, they somehow have to demonstrate that it's a 10%.
Yeah. Well, that, that would be up to the
Them to figure it out.
Up to them to figure out.
They present, or they diffuse the middle, they cut the cals. We're gonna put out some gallons to make the beer, we clean, and now we're gonna do this to
Sure. And maybe they can recycle all the water.
So this short discussion of supporting what, what Bobby's saying is a, one of the priorities for staff is, is the is new bill, new building ordinances.
That same thing with fire hydrant that we brought up earlier.
Yep.
Well, it's Casitas, but at the same time
Yeah.
Oh, my microphone, sorry. It's Casitas, but at the same time, do you allow somebody to build a house in the wild and urban interface and there's no, let's say there's no turnaround and there's no fire hydrant? And then, you know, it, it becomes, they, potentially they could lose that, their house. And you know, the community or the taxpayers end up paying for, for all of this too. So yeah, I think you have to plan strategically to minimize loss and maximize conservation.
We do conditional, we do typically though, condition permits, design review permits or whatever, to meeting the fire code. So turnaround and stuff like, think about that division, that subdivision. Excuse me, up on Drown Street, I think it was, 712 Drown, something like that, where they want to make three lots and so we do worry about those things. But as John says, there are a lot of other things that we might like to have be rules that are, the code is either moot most of the time or, or, or in contravention of the things that we think ought to be done. As we look at water in general, I think we're talking about conservation. We're talking about retention of storm water and probably gray water on, on parcels. And then we're talking about new sources of water. Well, we can't do anything about that last one. But we can certainly talk about the other two. And, and the breakout of topics in here seems like a good one to me. I mean, it may not be complete, but if you want to add another category, let's add a category. But I think we need to give some fairly detailed in-writing guidance to staff for what we think should go to city council, for what we think should go to Casitas or the Fire Department or who knows what other body that's outside our control and probably outside the city council's control. But at least have them exert their influence.
So what's the process of creating this workshop? Because I, it feels like what you're just speaking, Commissioner Quillissey is where we could figure all that out.
Well, that's, that, yes, but I think if we're going to have a workshop, we should come in armed with some things that we think ought to be done as a place, as a point of departure for discussion in a workshop. I agree with you. I think it would be good to get together with the BAB and go through all of that. But I think we need, we need to have something meaty to start. And we will no doubt modify it as we go through a workshop. But we can't just all walk in with blank slates.
So, so for you, this isn't meaty enough?
In general, it probably is meaty enough. But do we all agree with all of it? I happen to disagree with parts of it. And that's part of what I would comment if we were going to get down to the level of commenting on this thing as guidance to staff, which I don't think we're in a position to do tonight.
I think what Commissioner Quillissey was saying too is, if we think we want to add, if there's something here that we think is missing.
Right.
Then we can add to it. So I think it gets back to, we have to bring something to the table. So at our, whenever we can get this agendized next, hopefully it's our next meeting. If there's nothing else taking precedence.
Big blank.
We each, we each come back, we have an assignment and we come back and then, you know, we can report, put it together.
Send stuff into Sherry and she can collate it and give it to everybody so we can all think about it before the meeting. And it's not just that we don't control the Fire Department, we don't control Casitas.
Right.
There, as we talked about in our January joint meeting with the city council, it seems a logical thing to me, if we don't have sufficient water pressure or flow at some point in the city and someone comes to us and says, I want to develop that land, we ought to know first of all that there is insufficient water in that part of the city for fire suppression. And we should be in a position to legally and morally say to that developer, no, you can't have this permit until there is sufficient water for fire suppression for your project. But we don't have that ability to do that right now. We lack the data and I think we lack the mandate.
I would also like to have a clear concept of what we expect the output of this workshop to be. So we're not just sort of talking about different subjects, but it'd be nice to have a, a vision of what we want to end up with at the end of this workshop. Yeah, yeah.
Well, we could, I mean, you know, we talked about that it needs to feed or support our existing general plan, but know that our general plan sometime, hopefully in the near future, I'm not sure how soon, will be updated. But we want to look at the different elements and see how, elements of the general plan, how what we're proposing fits, these items fit into that, correct?
Yeah, I think that's absolutely what you were saying tonight. I mean, you can also do amendments to sections of the general plan outside of a comprehensive update. I just know that in the brief time I've been here, a comprehensive update's needed. And the housing, the housing element, obviously that's got to get updated every eight years and that's current. But it sounded like many of the elements are really out of date and certainly while Ohi doesn't have a lot of growth pressure, you're not looking to go to, you know, 20,000 people by 2050.
Not annexing the SIO.
Right. But a lot of policies and certainly the environment has changed considerably, what we know about it, since the 1980s. And I think that's a lot of what you're talking about here tonight. And even just all the different areas of water, how it links to fire and everything else. So that's a good enough reason, I think, to do a comprehensive update. I just want to say that you wouldn't want to wait for that to fold this in. I think you need to get something done on this sooner because, you know, when I look at the recommendation, it's saying, direction to staff regarding development standards and code amendments. To me, that's going straight to zoning. Though maybe some of this takes a form of guidelines or some other
All the building standards are in the code too.
They're in the code, right. The zoning ordinance is the code. So I noticed it doesn't say policy or plan, though that was clearly on your minds and it should be. Your general plan sets your tone for your codes, not the other way around. So I think you don't want to do things that then don't get put into that general plan update that's likely coming in the near future.
I could actually envision
Yeah.
the output of this workshop being a section of the general plan. We just, we have a new topic of water that is, it's a, it's a general plan item.
I was gonna say, keep in mind, you can do that. I mean, things like economic development for years was never required. Many cities were doing that as a step, separate standalone element. So water in and of itself could be either a sub-element or an element where it's kind of its own discussion.
Yeah.
We have, we have the conservation element that's 31 years old, so we can put it in.
That's a good place to have all this water-wise stuff. Yeah.
Okay.
So what we also might want to do for our assignment is, you know,
Read the conservation element?
Yeah, and I know I've read the general plan, but I know it's good to read it again and again and again. But yeah, maybe we look at the conservation element and and look and say, okay, what we're doing, you know, after we've gone through our workshop, we think it belongs under the conservation, or maybe it's a sub of the conservation, or as John said, maybe, maybe it's a whole new element and it's water. But, um, I think this is great. This is a good opportunity. I mean, this is a good thing.
And we have a lot of space on our agenda.
Yeah, and we do have space. And then the other interesting thing is, you know, I don't want to jump ahead, but I know on our up cupping, um, excuse me, upcoming, um, items, we have these proposed discussion items. And there's, you know, there's more on water, but there's also our sustainable living research initiative. There's the ADU, um, and emergency housing and, you know, maybe after we do the water, I'd also like us to have the, do the, well, we've got the fire one, water availability for fire. But I, I'd like to even expand on that. But maybe, you know, depending if it's slow, we can, we can really do some good, good things here.
Sure.
With the same kind of format that we're doing right now.
Would we like to look at a date for a workshop?
Yeah.
And propose that to BAB, to the BABs?
I don't know that we necessarily want to.
I don't think we're ready.
Yeah, I, I think we need to get our stuff together.
Well, we may not be ready now, but that.
We're.
We have a lot of thoughts that we're ready for a workshop. But I think that maybe we should come back together again at the next planning commission meeting.
Right.
And if you will, put together our negotiating positions or whatever you want to call it for going into a workshop. We should have some pretty solid ideas and they should be written down in a way that's understandable. And then we can get together with the BAB and see what they think.
I like that.
So personally, um, what I'm feeling about what you're calling an assignment.
For lack of a better word.
Water-wise, for lack of a better word. As far as my participation, I would, um, for me, like to really familiarize myself more with the general plan and read it as I have done in the past. Versus focusing on one of these items like, uh, Commissioner Quillisi and Commissioner Nolan are doing because, um,
I think we have to do both.
Both, yeah, totally.
Well, I, I want to look at the general, you know, it's, it's what I, there's two weeks, right? So, given what I know, time I can devote to it, I want to look at each of these sections in this discussion item and then look at the general plan and see where amendments can be made, need to be made. But not in specific details.
Okay, maybe we come back to specific details two meetings from now. And all of us, all of us read the general plan, at least the the conservation element and others, if you think they're appropriate. And then be prepared to take on more specific assignments at our next meeting. For, for generating, for generating that meaty stuff that we want to take into a workshop.
So Mr. Connelly, I have a Brown Act question for you. I would really prefer to do most of this via email where people pull together information and then we share it with all the commissioners. Is that something we can do by sending things to Sherry and having her distribute it to people or is?
Not being an attorney, I don't want to wade deeply into the Brown Act, but I think if you're emailing comments to the planning department, I don't think there's an issue with that.
Okay.
Is providing feedback.
Between ourselves, but.
No, I mean, I know other, and I've worked for a lot of different agencies. I've had comments, feedback, questions, whatever, from commissioners, council members. If they're emailed into the department, I don't see a Brown Act issue with that.
Excellent, okay.
I've, I've talked with, with Matt Summers as well on that specific topic. And the, my recollection of what he had to say was, first of all, don't send it to everybody this way. Because it sounds like you're doing deliberating. But if we send, if you send things to Sherry or to Luke and they get aggregated and passed back out, things of the sort where you say, I think this ought to be a topic that we discuss, that's not deliberating. If you say, on this specific point, I think we ought to decide to do this, that's deliberating and that's contrary to the Brown Act. So I think we ought to, we ought to take those things of saying, here, here are the areas that we ought to talk about. And then we can consolidate those at our next meeting. And, and then come up with, with discussion points specific to each area.
Ray, did you have?
Uh, yeah, and I, I like that idea. I'm just trying to think of a way to streamline the communication as, as it goes to the department and then out to us versus, you know, an ever-growing email thread. So I know what we, you know, what we did for the Earth Day Planning Committee is there's a Google Doc. And, you know, each of these landscape standards, gray water, retrofitting, et cetera, and here could be a column in a Google Doc that we then, if we have a comment, we can make a comment there and then this Google Doc keeps getting updated and shared.
We can't do that.
That's, that's what runs you afoul of the Brown Act.
But.
If you introduce a topic and then everybody says, this is what I think about that, this is what I think about that, we're deliberating.
How is that different than an email thread going to Sherry and then Sherry sending it to all of us and then we comment on what you wrote?
It only has, it's only peripherally, I think, associated with the process of going to Sherry and then back out again. And it's more critically uh, relevant to what you're saying in that communication that goes to Sherry and to everybody else.
Right, so why can't a Google Doc be used in such a way that the languaging we're using doesn't go afoul of the Brown Act?
Well, be, if, if we're expressing opinions on specific items outside of the public watching us do that, that's the violation.
Isn't it more, it's, to what we do here at Planning Commission, so, um, like, okay, so our, our next assignment is we're all going to look at the general plan, right? Look at the conservation element, then we're going to come back, we're going to have another meeting and we're going to just share our notes as, in a workshop format and that's when, that's where we have our discussion.
And that's agendized and it's in public.
Exactly. And then our next round is we're going to have our individual assignments, right?
So what is Commissioner Merk suggesting in terms of when you say, can we do this by email? What is the this? What are we doing by email?
We're, we're good, people are going to be doing research on different things, right? So I'm thinking, you could share your research, send it to Sherry, she could send it out to everybody else.
That's what I was speaking about it doing, but on a Google Doc where all the research is.
Not expressing opinions on topics.
Right, right, not opinions, just the research under each of those, it's all on one document, so we're not trying to follow an email thread because that gets super confusing.
There shouldn't be an email thread because what I'm thinking is, when, um, okay, so let's just say I, I have my two assignments and I send them to Sherry and you have your one or two and everybody else does. Then maybe Sherry compiles it in before a week, when our packets come out, in our packet, there's that, all of our documents consolidated. And then when we're, you know, at home by ourselves, we go through, just like we do with this packet, we review it and then we come to the workshop and we all have our, you know, I've read yours, you've read mine, but we haven't done anything outside of the meeting as far as having a conversation or a discussion about it.
Right.
Doesn't that make sense? We're not replying to each other's emails, we're just seeing.
Right.
Yeah. It's.
And whatever we do, interesting discussion.
The city attorney actually recommended that I just blind CC everyone when I send it so you can't reply at all.
Yeah.
There you go.
Took several years to figure that out.
Who's this brown guy?
They're having a, they're having training on that.
That's right, we got that email.
Yes.
I think April third or fifth, that five o'clock.
I have to respond.
Yeah, it's first week in April, which.
So.
Be inoculated.
The next item on our agenda is actually future agenda items. So I'm wondering if we would want to meet April fourth? Or if we want to put this off till April eighteenth and say, on April eighteenth, we will have had reports from each commissioner about various topics and. The fourth, yeah.
Well, you might get more assignments that way.
Well, I did sign up.
That's right.
Oh, is that, oh, that's the Monterey meeting.
Yeah, we're actually on a waiting list for that.
We're on a waiting list because it sold out. But I may not be here anyway.
Yeah, we don't know if we're going or not. So I guess we should plan on.
April third at five o'clock.
That's the plan, Brown Act training, yeah. Yeah, yeah, let's plan on the eighteenth.
Okay, eighteenth.
All right.
So on, on April eighteenth, the agenda item is going to be continued discussion on the water-wise?
Yes.
Right.
To the general plan, correct?
In relationship to the general.
That'll be our first topic, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. We're just zipping through the items here then.
Item four.
We've gone through item four. Oh, we did have a discussion item about Earth Day fees. Earth Day fees. Yes, so.
Day fees?
I say yes.
Yes, so I'll just briefly explain what it is. Um, at the last meeting, I asked if, um, the Planning Commission would approve the complete streets to have a presence at Earth Day. And at that point, they hadn't put out the applications yet. And, um, now I have the application and there's a fee involved on, I think I forgot to bring it, but I believe it's, it's seventy-five dollars.
Even for city government?
I think so.
We're part of city government written large, right?
Right, so the city might have to pay back. So anyway, I'm, I'm assuming, I'm, I'm kind of going under, there's a, a block called the nonprofit block because I'm not selling anything. So, um, it's, it looks like it's seventy-five dollars. And so I'm, I'm back here today asking if the Planning Commission approves for, um, the request to go to the next level.
To use your budget, part of your budget.
We have a budget?
There is a planning commission budget. That's how, that's how Ray and I are getting to go up to Monterey.
Oh, okay.
We haven't had any of those breakfasts. We must have seventy-five dollars, right?
We must have money left over.
It's a huge sush fund that's accumulated. All right, well, I would, I would move that we approve Kathy's request for the Earth Day fees. Yes. Could we have a roll?
This is one of those left pocket, right pocket things.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No. Item carries.
Okay.
Future agenda items, we already covered. Planning Commission reports.
But that is, whoa, whoa.
Yeah.
Excuse me. That's a really interesting cycle of economics there where the Green Coalition is given money by the city, a grant by the city, I'm calling it a grant, I'm not sure what it's called. And then, but then the Green Coalition needs to rent Libby Park for six hundred dollars for Earth Day. And then we, then because of that, we're charging the city seventy-five dollars for a booth. That's just very interesting economics.
It's.
Who does the seventy-five dollars go to? Does that go to the Green Coalition?
The Green Coalition.
Okay.
Yes. And the money goes round and round and round.
Yeah, it's all staying within the city, so.
I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Quillisi, did you want to report on this city council meeting?
I would like to. Yes, thank you. This is the city council meeting of March thirteenth, last week. There were some very interesting things that came out in presentations. Angelo Spandrio talked about water-related issues and much to my surprise. And he didn't say what the source of the prediction or forecast was. But he said that he expected the lake would be back at a hundred and fifty thousand acre feet ten years from now. How that happens, I don't know, because it's down about, what, forty now, fifty?
Thirty-four percent last.
Thirty-four percent. So that's around fifty thousand acre feet. Anyway.
Get all that state water through Cuyahoga.
I don't know. Um, but he said a hundred and fifty thousand acre feet in ten years and no drought restrictions by two thousand twenty-one. And if you believe that, I've got a bridge I'd like to talk to you about. He, he mentioned, um, more assessments to build the water fix, that is, the Delta Tunnel that will bring more Northern California water across, under the Delta and down to Southern California. That's a ten billion dollar project. He said the Ventura County interconnect, that is getting West County connected to East County, which is state water, is a twenty-six million dollar project. So that, and casitas share of that is six million. Presumably the other twenty million is picked up by Oxnard, Ventura, cities and stuff like, and the county at large. And that's a two and a half year project that, that interconnect. Jeff Kroll was here talking about high taxes on, on mon, on marijuana, driving people to the black market where they don't have to pay taxes. And, uh, there was a couple here that wanted to start a cannabis oil extraction factory down in Bryant Circle area. But, and it's wholesale sales only. I guess they'll sell to Jeff Kroll. But it's not allowed and they were unhappy about that. One thing that came up off the consent calendar, uh, Mayor Johnston talked about, as they were discussing approving the planning commission meeting minutes for December twentieth, Mayor Johnston said he had the impression that the planning commission may not have understood the parking variance that was approved for the Ojai Brewery at the corner of Montgomery and, and Ojai Avenue. He did not ask for any public comment on that, so I did not have the opportunity to stand up and say, yes, we did know what we were doing.
We had a long discussion about that.
Understood that. Whether everybody agrees with it or not is a separate question, but we understood what the issue was. Uh, there are a lot of suggested changes to the general plan as noted here. And staff is supposed to come back in one or two meetings with some revisions. But I think that's an ongoing process. And if staff really came back in one or two city council meetings with a bunch of suggested revisions, I don't think they would go deeply enough to address all of our concerns, for example. So that's something that'll just be ongoing. Uh, they approved, the city council approved a city email retention policy, which said, you, you, you can use your own personal email account, but retain items of city business for two years. Oh, okay. Then I misunderstood what motion was passed. There was a suggestion that city council members not use personal email accounts at all for city business. And that was, that was roundly defeated. But I'm not sure where it went. Please come up and, and educate us on that one.
Yes, after much debate,
Yes.
we decided that we all needed a new email box. And some of the council members didn't get the concept, but we convinced them it was simple that we would now all, like, for example, I'm Souza, Ojai City Council at, is it, a city, city, OjaiCity.org. And so everyone is doing, everybody has a new city email box.
Okay, I, I thought you already had one called Francina at OjaiCity.org.
Yes, but that's, that's different. In the sense that the public, okay, how, how can I explain it to you? This is all driven because in case we ever, because it's all public documents. So there has to be some place where our, all our emails go. And not everyone write, uh, like when the city sends us, the city sends us documents to our personal email currently. Okay, so now the city sends all those documents to our new personal email. Does that make sense? Which is.
So you'll have two city email accounts.
Ye- yes, yes, but, but that's, the, the city has a, we're, I don't have, the, the city, the city email is not my mailbox.
Yeah, so when you email Francina at OjaiCity.org or any of them, it goes. Yeah, so when you email Francina at OjaiCity.org or any of them, it goes straight to staff, it doesn't go to them.
Oh, how bizarre.
Because we don't want the city, the, all community be able to just email them all the time. We, we go through their email and then forward what needs to be forwarded.
Ah, oh, so when citizens address a city council member, staff filters that before the...
They censor it, if they don't like it, they trash it, no, no, no.
Okay.
But there's another piece to that, can I, you know, because a lot of people, the citizens write me personally, so now what I'll do is I'll just forward it right into my city box, and it, so if you, you know, if you accidentally write me to my personal, anything, like, now when I get, i- it's gonna take a little while to get it all, you know, going into that, but the whole idea is that anything that's city-related, that comes to us from the public or from commissioners or whatever, we can forward it into our, so that, and I've been wanting to do that for a long time, because that way everything's in one mailbox.
I'd like to suggest then, and, and thank you for correcting me on my misunderstanding of what, what the council passed, um, is there some way to publicize what your new email account is?
Yes, uh, there's many ways we could publicize it if we wanted to.
Has, has any one of them been implemented?
Um...
You said it was gonna be Souza, OjaiCityCouncil at OjaiCity.org?
Yes, well, eh, when people write me, I'll, I give them my new, you know, I, I, I respond to them from my new mailbox. I haven't done it a hundred percent yet, but it's getting there.
Okay, but I, I'll just ask Sherry, is there a list somewhere of those mailboxes?
If you go on the website, you can just click on her and email her, and then, but we're not gonna give out that new one, that one's not the intent for the public, I don't think, it's the intent of...
Okay, if you, if you click on Souza's name on the website to send her an email, does it go to Francina?
No, that's the one that goes to staff.
That's the one that goes to staff, right.
That's what they want.
We're not actually advertising their new emails, I don't believe.
But, 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 but actually, because I get a lot of emails from the public and from commissioners, you know, um, I'm gonna give that email out, I can do that.
At my discretion.
And I can even make it public at my discretion, if I wanted to, which I probably will do, because that makes my life much easier, because my other email is public, already public, so I might as well make this one public as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you for that. Um, there were a bunch of Libby Bowl fee waivers, fee waiver requests approved for various profit and nonprofit organizations, uh, had revisions to the employee handbook, and, um, a subcommittee set up with Johnston, Haney, McClary, and Gail Davis to review and recommend council protocols. They moved over to the redevelopment agency successor agency, and we learned, I think, and maybe Souza will correct me on this, but I think that in the future Ventura County will administer the, uh, payments that the redevelopment agency successor agency is making to pay off a loan from the city, and Ventura County, and they skim some of that off the top, I guess, but they will administer those payments at no charge and pay the school district and the city the money that's left over, that's coming back to repay that loan. And then, finally, on council member reports, Souza talked about Earth Day, um, there was a question, should the school district impose building fees which are supposed to be, this is on permits, the school district gets a shot at every permit.
They sure do.
Um, when they are supposed to be building new facilities, and we all know that the school district right now has not only twice as much facilities as it needs for this current student population, but they can't, they can't maintain what they have, so that's a kind of a rhetorical question that came out of the, the council and may be followed up again later. Um, there's a draft EIR by the city of Ventura on this water interconnection, the East County to West County connection. The first connection is into the city of Ventura water system, and then there's a second piece that connects pushing water back uphill to the lake, uh, and there will be, uh, comments will be discussed on March 27th, so six days from now. And Souza and Bill Guiric will be reporting back on the cannabis committee at the meeting of April 10th.
It's been moved to next Tuesday, March 27th for the public.
That's for the cannabis committee as well as the water interconnection.
The cannabis, um, we're gonna look at cannabis regulations on March 27th.
Okay, also on March 27th, there's gonna be a report and draft ordinance on tiny homes, uh, status of general plan update, and the, the list goes on and on, uh, so there was quite a bit that went on.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, seemingly endlessly at certain times, yes.
Um, Commissioner Nolan, did you go to a MAC meeting?
I did go to the MAC meeting.
Alright.
Um, interestingly enough, there was, it was really just one item, and it was the Full of Beans Coffee Shop, um, on Highway, uh, 33.
Oh, Full of Beans.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, um, I don't know, I, I started at seven, I was there till like, I think it was like quarter to 10 before it was over, it's a very long meeting, um, and it was very heated, there were a lot of members of the public there, um, it, it was very heated, actually, I said that twice, but it really was, uh, but anyway, what's...
Roast.
It was roasting hot, yes. Um, ba- basically what it is, is the, um, existing owner sold the property to Starbucks, and Starbucks, Starbucks wants to move their existing facility that they have in the, um, what's it called?
Red Horse Plaza.
The Red Horse Plaza by Rite Aid to the new location at Full of Beans. There's two lots at Full of Beans, and they're planning to merge apparently those two lots, take down the existing building, put a new one in, the new building would be the exact same square footage as the old one, but it would also include a drive-through with nine stacking cars. They're gonna have to take out one leaning oak tree, but they're gonna mitigate with five trees. Their intention is to, uh, do a water offset so there'll be no net increase, um, I'm just gonna quickly say a couple other things, but the, the, the topics of, uh, discussion were, everybody, meaning members of the public, they were, you know, really concerned about the traffic, more, thinking there would be more traffic and the whole thing about trying to make a left coming out, you know, and heading down to Ventura. Uh, they did have a, the county had already done a traffic study, but they had not heard back from Caltrans yet, so there's still, there's still, the public comment period is open. Um, and then the other bit of contention was the drive-through and, um, you know, idling and, and sound, because they're residential properties that border the, I guess that would be the east side, and then...
Hill.
Yeah, up the hill, and then there's also, um, a property to the north, it's zone commercial, but there was a house on it exi- before it was zone commercial, so it's non-conforming, and that gets rented out to, um, EMT, emergency medical, um, staff, and they're, they're like 24 hours a day, and apparently they're nineteen feet away from the property line, so there was, that whole thing was, you know, sound there. They also talked about the lights, and they wanted to make sure that they were dark scape friendly, they will be, they're gonna be on a dimmer and go off their LED. Um, anyway, in the end, the, um, three, I believe it was three of the MAC members, there was one missing, voted to have it moved forward with conditions, you know, that they would have looked in, that was once again, the traffic, the drive-through, the lighting and what have you, um, and one member didn't feel like they could, um, vote, she, she was, because the Caltrans, uh, report wasn't in yet, she felt like she couldn't vote on it. So, anyway, that's, um, that's where it went, so now, and now it's on to the planning commission at the county.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for attending there.
Yeah.
Did anyone mention how over-roasted the beans are and that Full of Beans has much better coffee?
Well, somebody did say that, but that's, basically, it was interesting, the owner of Full of, Full of Beans was there, because all these people were going, well, we love Full of Beans, and we, like the patio, and finally, he put his hand up, and he said, well, I'm the owner, and he said, I'm glad all you guys liked it, but I don't think enough people supported me, because I have been like, my business has been failing for the last two years, he goes, I had to sell it, and it took us this long to find a buyer, and finally Starbucks is coming in, and he goes, I just needed to sell, but, anyway, that's the story.
Yeah, okay.
And thank goodness Ojai has a no-chain store ordinance.
That actually came up.
Yes.
So everybody that wants coffee goes down to Miramani.
Ergo the traffic problem. Thank you. Um, Ms. Francina, it's time for our city council liaison report.
We head.
Did we cover everything?
First, I have to say, not everybody that wants coffee goes to Miramani, you're just kidding, aren't you?
Of course.
And, and it should be pointed out that Starbucks probably impacted Full of Beans by moving in, you know, a few yards away, right? So, I don't know if that was brought up, but, anyway, there we, so we have it. So, um, let's see, a lot of the things I was gonna say, you've already covered, I thought this was a great meeting, I'm gonna encourage the city council members to wa- other members to watch it, especially the new liaison, uh, that follows in the next quarter, I think they should watch this meeting, you know, since it's kind of a continuation meeting, and, um, you know, I understand all your frustration, Bobby, because things that I worked on in 1996, or actually 1994, before I was, uh, officially elected, are still, I'm still working on them now, many, many things, but, but then I always remind myself that we're still a small town, we didn't make the, the big mistake, which we did not put a freeway through the town, which would have destroyed every, you know, then none of this would really matter, because the town wouldn't exist like we, excuse me, like we know it today. I'm a little hoarse, because I've been kinda cold sitting here, sitting still here, sorry. Um, oh, yeah, I wanted to bring up, we have a roadmap to sustainability, remember the roadmap to sustainability? And, and I, I thought we should always have that posted on a wall, you know, and so I'm gonna dig that out as I read the, the general plan and kind of, you know, I'm glad that we're working, gonna be working on the general plan, that's great. Um, and, oh, I wanted to comment, Kath, Kath, Kathy, what you said about people taking out their, their lawns and then putting in rocks and how, you know, or other hard, so-called hardscape, how counterproductive that is, but the worst thing, I keep getting these mailers to put in artificial lawns, huge artificial lawns, and that shows that we have to really educate the public how important healthy soil is, because that is the answer, you know, we, to, to build, and there's a book out by an O, uh, the author actually lives in Ojai, uh, was Kiss, Kiss, uh, Kiss the Ground? Yeah, yeah, Jo- Josh, yeah, I should have brought it with me, I'm reading it, um, but anyway, I wish we could make that against, I wish we could have an order, make that against the law.
That is in our code, if you look in the landscape, um, standards article, it says no artificial plants.
So how is it that people are still doing it?
Unless they changed it recently, but it's been in there from, since I was, when I started on the planning commission.
Okay, and I need to review that, because...
I think people don't know that.
That reminds me of my next point, which is, why is it, uh, that the landscapers around here are not educating their clients? Are they not educated? What, I mean, what is, i- if the, you know, we, we could accomplish so much if the landscapers would adopt, you know, these more sustainable standards, so, anyway. Um, and then last, I wanted to say that, um, I think, I, I would be willing, Sherry, to bring my own water to city council, and if it's a burden to water, to wash the bottles, but I think washing the bottles is far better for the environment, there is now no doubt that we have to phase out plastic. You know, in Europe, there are grocery stores that are in Amsterdam, my hometown, they're phasing out plastic in the store entirely, you know, they're miles ahead, these bottles are gonna be, hopefully relics of the past very soon, because now they're predicting if we don't stop generating plastic garbage, that we're gonna have twice or even three, uh, we already have mountains, you know, islands of plastic in the ocean, so I, I totally agree with Ray, uh, Commissioner Powers, that we need to lead by example, and it, just even a small thing like this sends the wrong, wrong message, so, um, and it's not a criticism, criticism of staff, because I too appreciate when we have water, but I think that if, you know, if we can just bring our own bottles of water to the meetings, I'd be very happy to do that. Okay, is there anything you'd like to ask me?
Any questions for, for Francina? Thank you, Susan.
Alright.
Appreciate it.
See you, thank you.
Alright, and that concludes our meeting. Wait, Ray Powers has the final word.
Well, not, not because I want the final word, um, it's, it's a public service announcement, uh, just about Earth Day, because I wanna keep mentioning it every, each of our meetings. So, Earth Day is April 21st at Libby Park from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We are gonna have, uh, lots of activities there, lots of different nonprofits and groups, sponsored by the Green Coalition, and then many of us are on the planning committee, um, the gazebo stage, we'll have performances as well as, uh, experts in different fields on, uh, we have an expert on ocean plastics, uh, we have an expert on, uh, the relationship to soil and, and water and, and the oceans, um, we have experts on, uh, building and alternative building, so that's happening, um, it's a free event to the public, uh, our goal is to have a zero-waste event, so we're trying to put all that, uh, whatever we can do to implement that, and then also, um, uh, businesses or, or different organizations can go to the Green Coalition website, there's an application there to, uh, for, to have a booth there, and then also some scholarships are, uh, being given to, uh, business, businesses or artisans who lost their homes in the Thomas Fire, and so there's gonna be some booths that are free of charge, um, in scholarships, so that's on the application, people can, uh, write down their need, and that will be reviewed.
Thank you. Anyone else like to share anything? Yes, Mr. Quilce?
One last item, there's something here at tab six of our book.
Tab six, I never get back that far.
It's not on the agenda, but it's at tab six, um, to discuss, uh, the Sustainability Subcommittee and Continued Planning Commission Representation at City Council and other Commissioner Board meetings.
Check the date on that, because, uh...
I didn't get it.
Oh.
You were talking about...
It is, it is left over, but, but these are topics that we have not, that we have not...
That's really sad, we still haven't dealt with that topic.
Dealt with, right, so I would, I would recommend that we bring those back up at our next meeting.
Good. Sherry may do that.
I didn't notice the dates on it, but they are.
No.
It was just an old sheet of paper left in my book.
I was gonna solve it.
Alright, that said, I'm going to conclude our meeting.
Great.
We are adjourned.